All right, we've got a packed house. I'm so glad you're here this evening. Before we start, you were probably welcomed by some pretty amazing students. I would love to see if they feel comfortable coming up. Eli Hill kiddos, I suppose you're not kiddos anymore, sorry. Young adults, would you come up and introduce yourselves to us? Thank you for being here. If you wouldn't mind just saying your name. Well, saying your name, maybe let us know one thing you love about Eli Hill or excited about, and then what your plans are moving forward.
All right. Hello, I am Jessie Hirsch. One thing I love about Eli Hill is the individualized help. And I plan to join the Army after high school.
Hi, I'm Evan Offen. One thing I like about Eli is the strong sense of community, and I'm going into the Navy after high school.
Hi, my name is Jason Clare. Something I really like about Eli is just the community. And what I'm going into after high school is cosmetology, hopefully.
Hello, I'm Cassidy Zito. I really enjoy the support and the environment that Eli Hill provides. It's very comfortable. And after high school, I plan on attending PLU on a full tuition scholarship.
That's amazing. Well done. Thank you so much for being here this evening and welcoming our guests. So anything else you'd like to add?
I love being, I'm Carol Stumpf. For those of you who don't know me, I am, I've been at Eli for 10 years. And I love getting to do what I used to spend my planned time doing is tracking down kids and working with them one at a time. So, and these guys are awesome to work with.
Thank you so much. Best of luck too. So what Carol's not telling you is that she's retiring this year. After 37 years of service to public education. So let's give her a round of applause for that. All right, thanks again. Appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening. You're welcome to stick around. Front row seats even, if you'd like. All right. We're going to go ahead and start with approving the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? The agenda is written for this evening, May 22nd.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We have a number of consent items listed in our agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, at this time, we have some recognitions, I believe, Dr. Dent. We do. We have a lot of incredibly fabulous people in this boardroom tonight that we want to make sure that we recognize and welcome to this district. Amy Montgomery, come on up. You're going to kick us off with the introduction of two new assistant principals. Yeah, come on up.
I'm excited to be here. Yeah, okay. I'm excited to be here tonight. It is new wolf night, our first of two new wolf nights up at Mountain View this evening. So it's perfect timing to introduce two more new wolves to the group and joining our incredible district. First, I have Kyle Jones. Kyle is currently serving as an assistant principal at Auburn Riverside High School. He has a variety of experience in teaching behavior intervention, athletics, and school administration, with a real focus on special education is his background. A former Wildcat, Central Washington Wildcat and Concordia University grad. After years of working in high school, Kyle tells me he's ready for middle school. And we are excited to see how his leadership, especially in special education, as well as in other areas of the school, will impact our ability to meet the needs of all students, supporting their growth, belonging, and achievement. And we are changing the administrative structure at Mountain View. We're very grateful as we are an ever-expanding school up there at the mountain. So we are hiring two assistant principals, and I'm excited that Shelley Odell will also be joining our team this year. Shelley has been serving as both an admin intern and assessment coordinator at Shelton High School. And she comes to us with 20 years of varied experience as an instructional coach, facilitator, an assessment specialist, and secondary ELA teacher. She attended Western Washington, Cambridge College, and St. Martin's University. And throughout her time in education, she served in multiple roles that have focused on assessment, data analysis, and looking at things at both a systems and a student level. In my conversations with Shelley, one thing that's really struck out, struck me is her passion for students just comes alive even when her role is talking about assessment that she's giving to high school students. Always comes back to the individual, which is a great fit for us at Mountain View and here in this district. We're excited to see how her impact is going to help every one of our students achieve high levels of learning. So this is our great new team at Mountain View for the 24-25 school year. Thank you for having us to introduce them.
All right, Ginny Williams, let's keep this going.
All right, good evening, everybody. I am thrilled to introduce Dave Johnson. He is joining us as our new assistant principal. Dave is a former, works at Mattson Middle School in Kent. So he has plenty of middle school experience. He's done that the last three years. Before that, he traveled the world teaching in Costa Rica and Turkey. He is conversationally proficient in Spanish, which is wonderful for our student body. He is a former COOG Washington State, yeah, go COOGs. And the thing that we're most excited about, he has experience with the middle year program for international baccalaureate. So since we feed into Sumner High, that's going to be a great gift to us, as well as his proven leadership in multi-tiered systems of support. So we are really excited to welcome Dave to our team.
And now we have executive director, executive director Sarah O'Donnell.
Well, good evening. I'm the caboose, I think, and I get to introduce a really fabulous person joining the team in Sumner Bonny Lake School District. So I have the honor and pleasure of introducing Sherri Simpson as our new director of behavior and mental health supports. As you know, Ginny Larberg is retiring. And so we are so happy to have Sherri with us. So she comes to us from Kent School District where she has served as the Director of Student and Family Support Services since 2021. Prior to that, Sherri was the Assistant Director of Student and Family Support Services. She was also a program specialist, as well as a high school special education teacher. So Sherri's eager to support the Bonny Lake, Sumner Bonny Lake School District's whole child-focused team. Her experience implementing MTSSB systems and support, her intensive work implementing the comprehensive counseling model and success in bringing new mental health partnerships will be an asset to our team, to the strategic plan, specifically in our work with goals two and four when we support students. So Sherri attended Illinois Wesleyan University, Marion University, and received her program administration from Program, University of Washington Tacoma. Yes, U of T. So in her free time, Sherri enjoys spending time with family, hiking, reading, and swimming. And I want to point out, she is joined by her family this evening. I also want to introduce Charles, her husband, and then her children Allison and Mason, who were really excited to learn what a board meeting is like this evening. There you go. So Sherri Simpson, our new director.
Okay, Ms. Kelly Dent, Assistant Superintendent, has two incredibly exciting announcements. They're already out of their seats.
Good evening. So first, I'm excited to announce the new principal for Liberty Ridge Elementary School, Ms. Annette Bowen. So Annette has served in various leadership positions within the Sumner Bonny Lake School District. She is currently the Assistant Principal at Maple Leaf Elementary, where she has served the last five years. At Maple Leaf, Annette has overseen many different things, including positive behavior systems, attendance initiatives, academic and safety data collection, Playworks recess program, I could just keep going on. Her accomplishments really include creating systems that support students behaviorally and academically, while at the same time building strong relationships with staff and the, and the community. Now, Annette is no stranger to Liberty Ridge, having spent the majority of her career there teaching special, special education at preschool and kindergarten from 2005 to 2017. That's 19 years here in the district? Is that right? 19? All right, do a little math there. And so she is thrilled to reconnect with the Thunder Eagles and support their growth, both academically and socially emotionally. Annette is just really known, when I think about her and the characteristics, she just has such a warm heart. She just cares for staff and just creates that, that community within the school and the larger community. And then Annette just has a huge servant leadership heart, and I know that she'll be bringing that up there to the, to the new Thunder Eagle. So let's all welcome Annette to Liberty Ridge. Right, so next, it's my pleasure to introduce the new principal for Emerald Hills Elementary School, Mr. Corey Gould. So Corey has been with the district since 2007. So let's do the math. How many years is that one? 17. So he has some longevity up here. So Corey started out as a teacher at Bonny Lake Elementary and Daffodil Valley Elementary. Is that true? Or in the reverse order? Okay, and then he, that's where you did your internship down at Daffodil Valley, I think, yes? And then he went on to be an assistant principal at Liberty Ridge, and then this year he's serving at Bonny Lake Elementary as an assistant principal. So those experiences have, you know, helped Corey grow to be ready for this principalship. Again, much like Annette in that assistant principal role, Corey has just built his skills in multi-tiered systems of support, positive behavior interventions, just leading the building through positive relationships. Some stories about Corey is just being in there in PLCs, looking at data, improving instruction for teachers. And then one comment that was made about Corey was just how you walk alongside staff and teams and doing that work. So you're just sitting there diving in as a partner. So Corey is humble, he's hardworking. I heard he often arrives at the building before anybody else is there, and that his sense of humor is really appreciated amongst the staff. So I think Corey, just your dedication to students and staff is just going to be just an awesome fit for us to have at Emerald Hills. So again, just please welcome Corey as our new principal at Emerald Hills.
Okay, we have incredible staff. We also have outstanding students. Mrs. Morse, you want to come on up to, are you recognizing students from Bonny Lake High School? Yes? All right. We had some students go to the state music competition?
Yes, we did. If you're here, come on up. I know that I saw some of them come in.
Yeah. Are any students online? I have the certificates. That's what's the.
I'm fully here and ready to support you. I'm here to like cheer you on. Thank you. Okay. I mean, I'm, should I read them all if they're not here?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I have certificates of music excellence from students at Bonny Lake High School. So Ellie Brower. And then Alexander Dupree.
Dupree, thank you.
Carlo Skill Amnesty. Oh my goodness, Alexander. You should be doing this job. You're doing such a wonderful one. Thank you. I bet you have. Cole Sage. He was a state qualifier. Jacob Ludlow, also a state qualifier for solo ensemble. Joseph McKinley. Jelena Broom, also a state qualifier for solo ensemble. Simon Swaye was a state qualifier and winner for solo ensemble as a baritone. Mia McGott, thank you. State qualifier for solo ensemble. Aiden Hatcher was a state qualifier for solo ensemble. And the last one, Lizzie Boland was a state qualifier for solo ensemble and all-state honor band member.
Thank you. Good job, guys.
Yeah.
We have one last recognition. You are in for a very special treat, but I need for Ms. Marion Leach to come up here, please. We do have outstanding staff, and those students, I'm telling you, so super talented. But Marion is, oh, I don't even know, well, we're going to describe her in just a second. She's retiring this year. She is our general counsel, as well as our attorney for the school board. And we're going to give her a send-off like we do others. Marion said, just don't do anything like big or loud. Right, that's not going to happen. We are not in costume. But we do have something special planned just to celebrate Marion Leach and everything that she's done for the district. So bear with us for about six minutes, and Marion, you need to go sit by Kelly, who's going to defend you. Yeah, so give us a second to like get into, to like, like, character. Our school board meetings are actually pretty fun. Okay, Roger, hit it.
He's got, he's got to do the sound first.
All rise. This court is now in session. The Honorable Sumner Bonny Lake School District Board of Directors is presiding. We are here today to hear the case of the people versus Marion Leach, who is accused of being an outstanding school attorney. The prosecution will now present its case along with finding out who authorized this employee to retire. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, esteemed board of directors, today we bring before you a case of utmost importance. The defendant, Marion Leach, is charged with being an outstanding attorney. The evidence is overwhelming. The record irrefutable. And we intend to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that the defendant is guilty as charged of being an outstanding attorney. And more importantly, we intend to find out who authorized this employee to retire. Your honors, I call the first witness, Captain Marvel to the stand. Captain Marvel, can you tell the court how long you've known the defendant?
Hello? Yeah. Oh, hi. Yes, I have known the defendant for several years and can tell you without a doubt that I have seen outstanding, brilliant acts of legal heroism. I would tell you those, but they are bound by attorney-client privilege, so.
How would you describe her legal skill?
Well, Marion is like the superhero of school law, like protecting.
Wait, objection, objection. Your honor, leading the witness.
Sustained.
Withdrawn. Captain Marvel, thank you for your testimony. Your witness, Ms. San Diego.
No questions, your honor. The testimony speaks for itself.
You may be dismissed. I call Andy Griffith to the stand. Andrew Griffith, can you please provide an example of the defendant's outstanding service to this district?
Absolutely. I can recall one time she went overboard to help someone in a really tough situation.
And what about her ability to navigate complex problems?
Impeccable. I've seen her handle things that a normal person would buckle under the pressure.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Your honor, at this time, we would like to call Colonel Jessup to the stand. Colonel Jessup, do you know Marion Leach?
Absolutely.
So you said absolutely. But I wanted, do you know the general, her, the general counselors worked tirelessly to the Sumner Bonny Lake School District for all these years, demonstrating her commitment to know, value, and support every student in her duties every day?
I don't have any doubt.
Well, you seem to have a look of doubt in your mind about that. Are you sure you know her and the impeccable work she's demonstrated?
Crystal.
Are you absolutely clear in your mind that you know her? You're crystal clear? If you're so crystal clear about this, we're wondering, did you authorize the code red retirement?
I was just doing my job.
Colonel, did you authorize the code red retirement? I want the truth.
You can't handle the truth. We live in a world where staff like Marion Leach exhaust themselves to honor the service of our students and the community. We use words like value, know, and support. I neither have the time nor the inclination to explain myself to you. I would rather you turn to her and tell her thank you and let her go on her way.
So did you authorize the code red retirement?
You darn teetin', I did. I authorized the code red retirement.
Thank you. Your honor, let the record stand. Marion Leach is an outstanding attorney and has the right to retire.
Your honor, the defense does not contest the facts presented. In fact, we embrace them. The defense rests.
We will now hear closing arguments.
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, esteemed board of directors, my friends, the evidence is clear. Marion has worked tirelessly for over four districts, guiding them, leading them with courage and with confidence. She has not only been an outstanding attorney, but impeccable in her character and a great friend to all those who work with her. She is undoubtedly an outstanding attorney. Prosecution rests.
So members of the jury, you have also heard the evidence. We do not dispute the facts. We ask you to recognize that such excellence is a legacy to be cherished forever.
Members of the jury, jury foreman, have you reached a verdict?
We have, your honor. We find the defendant Marion Leach guilty of being an outstanding attorney. And a deserving retirement she will have.
I hereby sentence Marion Leach to a lifetime of admiration and gratitude from colleagues and clients alike. Enjoy your retirement. Court is adjourned.
If you know Marion Leach, she would never be on the defense side of any table. But we have just a couple of little things that we'd like to celebrate Marion with, and then we're also going to celebrate her a couple more times too, because, you know, that's what we do around here. We celebrate people that we love and that we work with. Marion, we have a plaque for you to hang somewhere as you retire, but just a, a show of appreciation for all of your hard work. It says, "In grateful appreciation for your leadership, heart, service, and contribution to our school district from our leadership team." And tonight's skit was performed by many people that love and adore you and have cherished working with you. We also have some flowers, because if you know Marion, she loves to garden, and she has beautiful flowers, but, and who's with you here tonight?
My husband, Pat, in the back, and my son, Andrew.
Husband, Pat, son, Andrew. Good. So last, but not least, we have some strawberry shortcake in the kitchen, and with permission from the board, if we could take a quick break? Celebrate with some strawberry shortcake?
Absolutely.
Okay.
10 minutes?
Perfect. All right.
We will go ahead and resume our meeting at 6:40. At this time, on the agenda, we have a section for board member comments. Does anyone have any comments they would like to? Sorry, to share this evening?
I'll start.
Awesome.
So I have two items. One, I want to congratulate and thank the members of the Transportation Department for all they do. Under Pam Knapp, the department has performed at an outstanding level with a focus on safety and service. Kudos to the group for qualifying for the state bus Rodeo, or Rodeo. Depends on how Lori pronounces it, which will be held in June. And also, on the maintenance side, a mechanical side, the recent 100% vehicle safety inspection results, which is, I don't know how many out of the last 50, but it seems like every year they're 100%. So I want to make sure I thank those folks and congratulated them. And then this morning, while walking my second-graded grandson to school, so I can add steps each day, we were talking about testing. And it reminded me of, while I was thinking about it, of the superhero celebration for Deb Norris. There are so many superheroes for all the testing that takes place throughout the spring. Students, teachers, building, and district staff, families, all play an important role in the testing process. In addition to the students in our school buildings, testing is conducted for home student, home school students, students participating in online learning, those graduating through the Alliance program, as well as private school students. So those are in addition to the ones that are in our building, and our teachers do such a tremendous job of all the work they can do and motivation with the kids. And then a lot of those folks that I just mentioned are tested here in the central office by staff who are putting their other jobs aside to do the testing work and that. As I talk about this, it's also reminded me that you, you kind of go in knowing there's some challenges for our superheroes and mainly our students, I think. Those students with limited English proficiency, those who are testing, who have learning disabilities and trying to get into the right test and that, and opt-outs. All, all those type of things really make it a very challenging process, especially logistically. Through the hard work of the superheroes, the Sumner Bonny Lake School District has continued to demonstrate growth and excellence in our testing. To all the superheroes, thank you for your dedication, hard work, and persistence. Finally, a special thank you to Kathleen Tuttle, hope you guys will pass that on. Research and assessment program administrator for all her work and attention and detail and her positive attitude, which starts months and months ahead of time. She is literally in her car handing out ear She is literally in her car handing out ear, uh, phones to folks, pencils, running tests to people. Uh, she just does such an amazing job with this, and literally, I think she starts, Kelly, I'm looking at you, probably about October. And then, once we get the results, getting those results broken down, so we can get them to all the program heads, as well as the classroom teachers and principals and that. So, it's a, it's an amazing undertaking in a district. Sometime when I have more time, we can talk about what happens on those opt-outs and those automatic zeros and what that does to a district. It's pretty disheartening, but, uh, I gotta tell you, people do such an amazing job. And, uh, finally, for the families, I know that, uh, words of encouragement, snacks, all sorts of things. We're going through, uh, the parents as we were walking the kids to school today. So, quite an undertaking. I really thank everybody for it.
Thanks, Bill. Other board member comments? Paul?
I'm all done shoving, shoveling this in to my mouth so I can speak. Recently, we had the Community Summit. That was a, uh, a really good turnout. I had the good fortune of going to the vaping breakout. And the students were really animated in that. They, there was mostly students. Uh, the adults kind of sat and listened. They told us pretty much they wished the vaping would stop. And I asked them a question. I said, "Do you guys know what would happen to you or your friends if you got caught vaping in the bathroom, or if you got caught with vaping supplies?" They did not know. That was a shock to me. So, hopefully, we maybe can discuss that a little bit at the end of the uh, meeting tonight during discussion time. On a slightly more positive note, uh, I, on Saturday, I was able to attend Freaky Friday, uh, which was the drama production from Sumner High School. And it was a large cast. Uh, between the cast and all of the production crew, there was, must have been close to twenty-five, uh, students. Really well done. It was a lot of fun. And I should have had this. I had it queued up earlier. There it is. My daughter just sent this to me today. She's got a friend that's in the culinary, uh, department up in Bonny Lake High School. Next Thursday, May thirtieth, the Bonny Lake High School Drama and Culinary Clubs present Murder Mystery Dinner. It's a comedy dinner theater experience with a three-course meal. There is a flyer out there, so you can buy tickets early if you're interested. That's Thursday, May thirtieth at six thirty in the Bonny Lake Commons. We'll be talking about it later tonight to make, see if we have time to do it. It sounds like a lot of fun. I encourage anyone else interested out there, uh, to go eat good food and to see a good drama production put on by, uh, people and students that live right here in this community.
Thanks, Paul. Kevin?
Yeah, lots going on. It, uh, as the school year, the light at the end of the tunnel for staff, uh, we start to see the end of the school year approaching. Um, thank you to all the staff that's making testing successful, uh, and also just getting, uh, students to the finish line here. Uh, especially our seniors, uh, lots going on with them. Uh, attended the SHS showcase, uh, recently and got to see and hear about all the great students at the school and the achievements and the things they've done, uh, to give back, um, as well as attending the Community Summit, as Paul mentioned, and, and the awards that students, uh, received and, and community members received, uh, putting community above self. Um, I attended the breakout for homeless families in Pierce County and learned a lot about, um, the challenges and the roadblocks and the things that are put in place for homeless, uh, families to get help, especially our homeless students in the district. Um, but was encouraged by a lot of positive, uh, outlook and programs and policies and things that, uh, people are putting in place to reach out and help, because we know when students have, uh, you know, a roof over their heads, that their academic achievement is always much higher. So, great, uh, great events to attend, and, uh, I look forward to the rest of the school year and all of the other senior-type events we're going to.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, just to echo those comments, I think the only other one I attended that you guys didn't mention was the Rotary Honors Night, um, for the high GPAs in the district, and, um, it's just such a season of celebration for our kids. Um, and I love this season, as I know you all do as well. But I also just want to give a quick shout out to all the people, um, the adults in this district who also attend those events. They don't have children there, but they're there because they've invested in these kids over, um, the years that they've been in our schools, and they show up. And, um, these are long nights, um, for our staff in this district and oftentimes giving up their personal time with their families to just once again, um, support and value and know, um, the kids who are being, um, honored, um, and recognized during this really awesome time of the school year. So, I know, um, you know, at the Rotary event, Mary Lee, you were there, um, Kelly, you were there, Elle was there, Lori was there, Steve was there. I'm sure I'm forgetting people, but these are long nights for you, and I just want to recognize that. And thank you for, um, your countless hours of supporting kids. Anything else? All right. At this time, we're going to move into audience comments. Um, David, would you like to kick that off for us?
Absolutely. As we move into audience comment portion of the meeting, the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of involving members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not receive action at future meetings. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning, and parameters for negotiations should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all registered speakers have been heard. We ask that everyone adhere and understand the following guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous, professional, refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Failure to do so may result in the board president or designee interrupting or ending the comment. Speakers who registered by noon Tuesday, May twenty-first will be heard. If you're providing in-person public comment when your name is called, please come up to the podium and state your name. Please address your comments to the school board as a whole, and you will have three minutes to speak. Um, I will signal speakers with the bell when one minute remains. Our first public comment tonight is Philip Loyt.
Uh, good evening. I'm a journalist with Inland Auditing Media, following up on an incident that occurred December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. I was working on a story regarding public records requests and tips regarding poor behavior from public servants. The people were not left wanting long. In what can only be described as a liberty-hating hold-my-beer moment for the district and city, a rights violating power couple heard the call of true tyranny and leapt into action. The power couple was none other than the Director of Safety and Security for the district and a police officer, Matt Watson, from the Sumner Police Department. Fun fact, Officer Watson was a school resource officer two days after I did my public records request, not at the time I was there. As seen on the Inland Auditing Media YouTube channel, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, the Director of Security and Safety had me unlawfully trespassed by Officer Watson under threat of violence. In a March fifteenth statement from the district, one of the assistant superintendents contradicted the actions of both the director and Watson, stating I was never trespassed. It's an untrue statement, as evidenced by video footage, and is a poor attempt at avoiding liability on behalf of the district and city. After I came, after I was unlawfully trespassed, I received body worn camera footage concerning, confirming tips received. The district Director of Safety and Security is the abusive bully who weaponizes police and acts as whims, as if he were the local lord of the land. But don't take my word for it. Let's hear from the Duke of Sumner himself.
As a reminder, speakers should be courteous and professional, avoid profanity, vulgar language, and are not permitted to talk about employment matters or complaints. Individuals are permitted to name a, not permitted to name a specific staff or board member.
Thank you for the reminder.
A local ex-parody account formerly Twitter of the Director of Campus Safety and Security from nine years ago speaks out as the ghost of shiver past, highlighting the director's glowing personality to this very day. I hate football. I have a rare disease known as little man.
As a reminder, you are not allowed to name staff members in your comment.
The entire school hates my guts. I enjoy doing everything I can to ensure safety. Though I unequivocally support the director, the director's liberty of free speech, to call me what he did, he violated policy five zero one-two, and I attempted to get ahold of the school to enact procedure found in that. And that was rebuked and completely not acted upon since then. Since school district officials have refused to address.
Thank you. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal, um, may not be discussed. Thank you very much. We're going to end your comment.
Thank you.
Our next audience comment will be Mr. Veteran. Thank you. So, our next audience comment is Mr. Veteran. Thank you.
Steve?
Actually, I've ended your comment because you cannot mention, uh, topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment, or dismissal of personnel. Mr. Veteran, if you have a.
It's me explaining something that happened.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and close this comment. Thank you.
Okay, our next audience comment is Terry McCoy.
We're going to continue our meeting, please. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Terry. Thank you.
I think I'm good. Good evening, appointed superintendent Dent and elected district directors. My name is Terry McCoy. My husband's family has lived in this community for over seventy years. He and all his siblings graduated from Sumner High School. Our youngest daughter graduated from SHS a very, very long time ago, along with nieces and a nephew graduating from Bonny Lake High School. Needless to say, we have witnessed much change. Our district website says, quote, "Our commitment to creating and maintaining physically and emotionally safe learning environments that support the social, emotional, and academic excellence of every child is a top priority in the Sumner Bonny Lake School District," unquote. I would continue, but I'll stop there because I only have three minutes. I don't doubt the desire and intent, but as in life, personally and professionally, there's always room for corrections and improvements. I'm part of a rapidly growing, diverse community of families in our district alarmed at examples of improper protocol, treatment, and possible illegal handling of family concerns and/or grievances. In addition, the examples are mounting in number. Here are a few. One, Sumner Bonny Lake School District's negligence in abiding by district policies within the guidelines of the law and the State Board of Education for Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three. Two, Sumner Bonny Lake School District's negligence in abiding by district policies within the guidelines of the law and the State Board of Education to special education services known as IEPs. Three, more and more students in our district are feeling bullied and threatened due to possible DEI policies that are having reverse racism effects and possibly influencing the growing mental health instabilities in some students. More and more students in this district are being falsely accused of hate speech and fights, fight clubs, and drugs requiring additional school resource officers and/or campus safety officers. To borrow some of the language in our, in our website, "Our rapidly growing diverse group of families have an unwavering and relentless commitment to the creation and maintenance of physically and emotionally safe learning environments that support the social, emotional, and academic excellence of all children in our district. And we look forward to working with the district and accomplishing those objectives." Thank you.
Thank you. That ends our audience comments for this evening.
Thank you. All right, first up on business matters. Uh, we are at the appointment of a school board director for, uh, the unexpired term for director, District One. Um, do I have a nomination for that appointment?
Madam President, I move that the board accept J.B. Smith for the Sumner Bonny Lake School District Board of Directors for District One.
Thank you, Bill. Give me a second. Do I have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right. We're going to go ahead and, uh, vote. Roll call. Thanks, Jermaine.
So, I will be, uh, begin, um, with Paul, and you can respond with either yes or no. Paul Williams?
Yes.
Um, Bill Gaines?
Yes.
Aaron Marquardt?
Yes.
Kevin Lewis?
Yes.
So, vote passes unanimously to appoint, um, Johannika Smith to District Number One seat.
Awesome.
Welcome.
All right. For your information, uh, we have the Budget Status Report for March listed in the packet. Um, the district, or the administration recommends extending the current interlocal agreement between the City of Bonny Lake and the Sumner Bonny Lake School District for one year to support the Parks and Recreation Program effective September first, twenty twenty-four, expiring August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve this agreement?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, I have a couple of comments I'll make. Um, I'm, I'm glad to see that we're, uh, continuing the partnership with the City of Bonny Lake. Um, but I want to be very clear in, in what I would like to see as a board director in the school district is that they, uh, they do not privatize their Parks and Rec program. Um, I would like to see that kept as a public entity, because I think that's the way to best serve the students and, uh, athletes and activities of this great district. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we have some, uh, policies here for included. Oh. Oh, would you like me to do that one? Sorry. Let's do that. Um, the administration recommends that the board approve Dr. Lori Dent's, uh, twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven superintendent contract for the Sumner Bonny Lake School District. Sorry. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Very happy to, to see a contract come and play for you, and I'm very excited to have you still be on board and do the good work you're doing.
We'll do roll call. Roll call.
I can't believe I almost passed over the Superintendent of the Year's contract on the agenda. So sorry.
I will say that's the job you do up here. It's extremely nerve-wracking. I did it once last month, and I could not, I just sit over here usually, and I'm like, that looks, that looks easy. It's not easy. It's super nerve-wracking and stressful, so very easy to do.
I'm allowed one, was that like a mulligan? At least one, right? Thank you for your grace. I appreciate that. All right, we're going to go ahead and roll call.
Okay, so we'll begin, uh, with Paul Williams. Um, you may either vote yes or no in favor or against the contract. So, um, we'll begin with Paul.
Yes.
Bill Gaines?
Yes.
Aaron Marquardt?
Yes.
Kevin Lewis?
Yes.
So, the vote is unanimous to approve Dr. Lori Dent's two thousand twenty-four to twenty-seven, uh, contract for the Sumner Bonny Lake School District.
All right. Yeah. Thank you. All right, now, policy matters. Um, we have a few board policies, uh, listed for first reading. Uh, sixty-seven hundred nutrition, uh, sixty-seven oh two wellness, twenty-one, twenty-four physical education health class, sixty-seven oh one recess and physical activity, um, as well as the board procedures, uh, listed for each policy. All right, at this time, we have a presentation. Uh, Director of Maintenance and Operations, David Cuts, will present the Maintenance and Operations Department update to the board. Welcome, David. Good to see you again.
It's cute that they want to contain me in this box here, but I think I can just pick it up and go. Yeah. Board of Directors, Dr. Dent, uh, friends and colleagues here, uh, and at home. My name is David Cuts, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and I am pleased to be here, um, presenting my twenty twenty-four Maintenance and Operations update. Um, I'm, I, I will note for the crowd, I'm not using the high-tech clicker. I have a high-tech Roger right there who will, uh, fly through the slides with me. Obviously, uh, where we're here, Maintenance Operations is a big part, a small piece of a very big puzzle. Obviously, uh where we're here, Maintenance Operations is a big part, a small piece of a very big puzzle. Um, we are here to know value and support our students. And uh we are very, very fortunate to um to have a role in that and we're very thankful for the opportunity. Um, I like this slide. I know we talked um over the years, you know, we, we, all of our entities, of the departments and, and the buildings, we're, we're literally locked arms around um caring for our students and all these pieces were, were again, a small piece of a very large pie. Um, and it's fantastic that Maintenance and Operations gets to be a part of all the great work that we do here uh on a daily basis. So our relationship to the district plan, um, we provide healthy, safe, and secure learning environments for um all students, staff, and guests in our buildings. Um, to obviously maintain fiscal responsibility, which I'll touch on a little bit later, and of course, supporting the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District community. These are fantastic hydrangeas here and I'm about to knock them off. So yeah, I've never seen that color either. They're cool. Yeah. Uh, relationship to policy sixty-eight hundred, um, the district, the, the superintendent is, is required to provide uh a program which provides safe and healthy, secure learning environments. Not only are we required to do that, um, we feel very fortunate that we get to do that and be a part of that as well. Equity, um, Maintenance and Operations strives to provide barrier-free access to all um students, staff, community members. Uh, we've learned, um, that's a fantastic burden to carry to make sure that every person who visits our sites, whether students, staff, or community members, um, have no barriers to access of our buildings. Um, I appreciate the fact that we get to support and partner with many, many departments and organizations in the community that, that serve the lesser served folks in our community. Um, just to have a part of that is uh it's, it's heartwarming. Um, you can talk to anybody in our, in our um department, from custodians to grounds to maintenance people. Uh, they walk that walk, they talk that talk, and it's uh very proud to be a part of that. Um, some of you have probably seen board report, my, my reports. This is the third time I've done it. Um, some of the numbers on here, uh they're great numbers. Uh, you'll notice if you look at last year's, that the numbers have changed a bit. Um, we are a department of sixty-nine Maintenance and Operations professionals, including custodians, grounds, maintenance. Um, we have fifty custodians in the district. Currently nineteen Maintenance and Grounds, and that's, I broke that out, uh twelve Maintenance, seven Grounds folks. Um, we're responsible for one point three three million square feet of facility. And if you think about every custodian out there is responsible for about thirty-three thousand square feet, meaning that's about the size of your Sumner Early Learning Center. I, I love that fact. I love that number. Um, the acreage, um, I want to, I don't have my notes. I wish I did because the, the number, you see, we have three hundred forty acres of grounds that we take care of. That's forty-nine acres per ground stack. Um, the first time I stood up here speaking to the board, that number was about sixty some acres. So thank you for the support in, in our staffing and that. It's, it's a really big deal. Thirty-seven football fields each, uh used to be forty-nine football fields. You think about that, that, that's huge. Um, right about forty-five hundred work orders submitted for last school year. That's an uptick of about one percent. And it's kind of how that looks every year. It's pretty, pretty standard. I don't know how well you can see the slides from at home or here, but yes, we're proud of our snowplow, or proud of our snowplows. Um, I'm, I'm very proud of, you know, uh Bill talked about the superheroes. The superheroes on the left, that's our crew getting ready to go wave signs on Election Day this past Levy Day. Um, it was rather cold and they hadn't had enough coffee yet. Um, but by the time they came back, they were jazzed and energized at the interaction they had on the street. It was pretty cool. Um, just for illustrative purposes, that's our new generator that's going to be installed at MNO that's being lifted by the crane. Um, that, that's a big, big unit and that, that was a fun day, it was a perfect, beautiful day, as you can see, to do a, a heavy lift, so. Uh, this particular slide just shows, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a goofy slide. It shows our uh work orders per month by year. And the last couple of times I've done this, I, I like to put two or three years of data in there just to kind of show what it looks like. And we average about four hundred work orders a month. But when I opened up the slide and I had all nine years on there, I thought, oh, that's pretty interesting to see where, where the work, when we're the busiest and when we're not so busy. That's what it looks like. That's kind of backwards. If you look in the middle of the slide, um, June, July, the numbers dipped down as far as submitted work orders. This is, our people are in the buildings just working their tails off to, to get it ready. They're not, we're working on work orders we already have. Um, and then if anybody wants to guess, what the big spike to the right, when you get there about August or so, that's people who can't stay away for the summer. They want to get back in and prepare the building for this fall. Um, that's uh, and if anybody wants to guess what most of those calls are, August and September? Anybody? Yeah, yeah, come for complaints. Yeah, they want it cold. They want it cooled. That's right. And then we kind of taper off, you know, as a year goes on, and then you see a little dip again for uh spring break, back to summer. They outwire and anybody wants, everybody knows what the green one at the bottom was. Um, a big dip in work order submission. That's COVID. Yep. And we cannot explain the five hundred and five on the, the top of that spike. Don't know what that is, but. Uh, another interesting little piece of data, um, this is average work orders per month per technician. Um, you can see at the, at the peak there, we were about fifty-one per. And every year it's, it's picked down and I'll, I'm proud to say that's because we've improved our staffing. Um, you know, a little, another extra person here and there to share the responsibility. My favorite slide in the packet, I know it's almost impossible to see, um, but this is the, the percentage of work orders by technician. I had no way of breaking it out by like plumber or electrician. You don't know their names, but I, I can tell you. Um, the bar graph on the right looks like service metals. I, I love that. That's a, that's pretty cool. Um, the top person gets the most work orders. That's our plumber, Jeff Merrill. Um, that's all the pink to the right is all the plumbing, but you'll notice he has heavy pieces of pink and, and sort of red color. That's lighting and electrical. Plumber works with electricity too. It's pretty awesome. Um, then this breaks down, uh warehouse used to be the top, the top getter of work orders. Now they're, they're, they're competing with our plumber, electrician. Um, and then about a third of the way down at the halfway point below, you'll see those really dark bars, right? Those are almost black. Every one of those are HVAC work orders. Um, temperature complaints, controls, uh mechanical issues, that kind of thing. And you can see it's shared by a lot of people. Um, Mariah in our office, Marina, um, Ernie, myself, uh George, our one and only mechanic, does all the HVAC right now. Um, so that's, that's a lot. So I just think that's an interesting piece to see the pie, sort of how it's spread out. Uh, continuing challenges. Staffing vacancies for the skilled trades. Think about electricians, think about HVAC plumbers. Uh, they're not hungry right now. They're not looking for work. They're not out there knocking on the school district store to come to work for us. Big challenge. Um, continued cost escalation for equipment parts, our vendor support. We have partnerships with a lot of vendors where uh we just, you know, we're not capable of doing some of the work. We have to call in our partners to come in and help us out. Um, mainly right now, uh HVAC work. And you remember probably the last few times I presented, I had the same three at the bottom, the unfunded clean buildings, clean building standards legislation, the unfunded uh smoke fire damper legislation, and the lead and drinking water. There's a lot of legislation out there. It's being crammed on our throats. We have to be compliant in certain issues and there's no way to fund that. We're on our own for that. So it's a lot of work goes into that. Just a quick snapshot of our, of our twenty-two, twenty-three operating budget. Um, usually always seventy-five percent of the budget is maintenance um work and the grounds work. And then you see building operations. That's a number we're paying more and more attention to now with uh cost of consumables and just running the buildings. Um, tightening that up as much as possible. That's a never-ending battle as you, as you might imagine. So what's working well? Um, I talked about uh working with our vendor partners and our outside partners, um, just finding other ways to get work completed in the district. There's a lot of work coming our way and sometimes it's hard to get that work done, so we have to get creative and that's just working with our vendors and and uh lots of budget work, getting that worked out. Um, indoor corral improvements, all that Esser. You, you all remember the Esser discussions. Um, if, if I recall, we've, we've we, I think we've bought that balance to near zero. Um, we've used it very, very, very smartly. Our climate fellow, energy team, um led by Marina, we have and Mariah, and there's uh others on our team that, that are constantly looking at um how we can sort of save money to put it back into the classroom, um simply by turning off lights, managing the heat, those kind of things. Um, all of our partnerships, we're, we're, every year we're, we're creating and in building more and more partnerships inside and outside of our, our groups. Um, I'm really proud of that with our um community-based folks, Eli Hill, Womoa, Wazda. Um, I mean, we're, we have even our own grounds people are working with folks to build partnerships and, and find, you know, really creative ways to involve interns that are in the work that we do. Uh, the hiring of our custodial manager, Ernie Hector. If nobody's met Ernie before, stand up, Ernie, say hi. That's a. Um, that, that's a big plus for us after, after quite a few years. Um, and Ernie jumped right in. He's doing a fantastic job. Our student interns, our summer custodial work, um, that was so successful. Last year we hired seven student interns from uh uh special services, folks came and um they did a great job for us. So we're we are furthering that program for the summer and I hope to continue with that as well. Um, you've probably all noticed the improvement to our grounds over the, over the last few years as our staffing's increased. Uh, that bar that we refused to lower, we're, we're finally getting back to that bar again, and I'm, I'm very proud of the work uh that folks have put into that. And that's all due to improved staffing, equipment, et cetera. Um, our, our response to work orders is we're constantly improving that. If we see it, we're doing it. We just deal with it. And I put work in progress for long-range budget planning on the work in progress. I have a lot to learn about budget and, and, and budget planning, long-term forecasting, and Bing and her team are just, have taught me so, us really, the whole department about what that means and how that looks. So, awesome. Uh, just throw this one up real quick. Um, these are work orders with, with good data, heavy data. Um, room numbers, technician types, problem types, costs, and all that. Um, if it's in the blue, that's us. And if it's in the green, that's compared to about probably three thousand other school districts using our program. I'm proud of the fact that we, we kill on every one of those. We're, we're really good at, have quality information. Yeah. Um, proud of this number two. I wish I had my notes. I could tell you exactly, but we are uh work orders completed in less than seven days. Um, that bar has moved from the left yellow, which is like low median. Uh, now we're into the top twenty percent in the country, uh the way we do, or we're approaching the top twenty percent. Um, I stood before you last year saying, I know we can get there because they're all doing it. Those twenty percent are doing it, so why can't we? Um, I'm proud of that, that fact there. Opportunities for improvement, top of the list right now for us is the clean buildings compliance, um, in our energy management plan. You'll, you'll hear about the work that we're doing, um, a lot of folks are doing to design a new policy, a new procedure uh to become more compliant with these unfunded mandates. Um, and frankly, it just, it does good by everybody to be able to put that money back in the classroom. Uh, work order system, um, quality data, some of these little charts I pull up and stuff, you know, there, there's a lot of data in our work order system, but it's antiquated. And we are currently looking at um improving with a new modern, more modern system. Um, I warehouse space, oh, it just, we, we need space. We're, we're, our warehouse is packed to the gills. I think some of you maybe um the last few years taking tours of our warehouse and see it's stuffed to the hill and uh the next one being the surplus management. We're constantly pushing surplus through there, trying to make things work, but uh our, our box is only so big, so. Um, custodial coverage is still, and will be a challenge for a long time. Our buildings, if anybody's paid attention, there's not one building in the district that sleeps on weekends, um evenings, and especially our secondaries. Um, so we'll, we'll continue to work to support uh those buildings with custodial help as we move forward. Um, our facility use process, we just need to streamline that, tighten it up a little bit. So we're, we're taking good care of those who want to use our facilities, but those users of the facilities, we need to make sure they take care of our facilities. Um, and then increasing technician work order submission. There's a chart I'll show you in a minute. Um, you know, we, we like to, when you remember last year, I mentioned the old timers have a hard time using the technology, the app. They're starting to do that more. Um, so when, when somebody's working on an issue and they get the, the, oh, wait, why are you here? Can you take care of this as well? They can whip out their phones and do a work order for that, right? If you see it, let's fix it. And I'll, I'll, I'll touch on that in a second. Um, and then always looking for more professional development for our staff, for our classified staff. Um, just finding ways to get their, their CEUs or credit hours. Um, that's a challenge still. Yeah, post-COVID, it, it's, it's coming back though. Um, this is the, if you see it, do it slide. Um, an interesting thing that happened is with our old system, that wonky app is, is just that, it's wonky. So our technicians in the field are learning, okay, if I did that, I'm going to make sure there's a work order for it, but it's easier to call our office to submit the work order rather than do it on their phone. So the technician is the blue, that's our district compared to the green, other districts that are doing it. That number was eleven, so it's dropped to three percent because they've now put the burden on the admin, which is our office folks to submit work orders. So it was an unintended change, it was the other way. But I think the new work order system will fix that. Um, another one I'm super proud of, this is percentage of preventive maintenance work orders completed in a month or less. This is all our heavy work we do, uh summers, spring breaks, Christmas, tearing down boilers, tearing down chillers, uh mechanical equipment. Um, the reason this is an opportunity for improvement is I wanted you to see, if you go back to last year, our black bar was in the yellow. So we weren't getting them done as fast. So I'm probably going to drop that off next year. You won't see the slide on here, but if we don't hire an HVAC tech soon, that number is going to start sliding the other way. I, I'm confident of that, but I wanted you to see the improvement. But our last HVAC guy, um, before he retired, blasted through a ton of preventive maintenance work, spent a bunch of money doing it, but you got to set up for his being absent. So we'll see what that does, but that's probably dropping off next year. Of course, our hierarchy of needs, um, the, there's data. Anywhere you look, you're going to find data that says a quality facility, a student attends school in a quality facility, they're gonna, they're gonna miss less school, they're gonna perform better. Um, there's, frankly, they feel safe. If they feel safe, they are safe. And if they're safe, they're going to perform great. What I, what I'm especially proud of is Maintenance and Operations. We have sort of left the base to the psychological need and the safety needs. We are literally getting into um the belongingness, right? The feeling of safety, the, the, with all our partnerships of putting interns to work and that, it's, it's our reach has gone beyond just the basis of the needs, so I'm very proud of that. Questions? I have no idea how long that was. It felt like about twenty-five minutes, but. Yeah, I hope you find it useful. And if you, if you think of something you'd like to see in these reports, please let me know. I'm, I'm happy to put it in there. Trying to keep it interesting for you.
Well, that's always the amazing part, hearing your presentation and being a board director, I'm just always blown away how, how many, not only how many departments we have, but how complicated they are and how integrated they are into each other and how you've achieved the ability to bring that back to the, you know, social, emotional well-being of students. Because if they're in a comfortable environment that feels safe and is warm or cool as in, um, that they're going to learn better. I appreciate that you've instilled that in, in your staff and I just cannot thank them enough. I know when you've given us tours of the facilities, I'm just, I'm blown away with the level of detail, the cleanliness, the, the work, and the pride that they put into what they accomplish. It shows and it's, I just pass them on my thanks. It's, I can't appreciate them.
I will for sure. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board or comments?
Uh, I just want to mention, you know, David is one of the first that's going to point the finger at the other guys and give them all the credit in the world. And he has done such a great job, I think Lori would agree with me, uh developing not only a team atmosphere up there, but where they see themselves as an integral part of the district. And that's not always been the case, unfortunately, for Maintenance and Operation. Um, and as a side note, And as a side note, the, the snowplows, I don't know why, but it put a big lump in my throat. David and I started working together and we had the blizzard of, I don't know what year it was, snowmageddon. And unfortunately we were closed for a long time. We were a number of days. And at that time we had a tiny little Kubota tractor backhoe. With one poor guy who was frozen over the top of it after eight hours of being on it and everybody's out with shovels and that. And, um, Lori came up as I was checking on things and we may have got the hint that she wasn't happy that we were closed. Just a little. And, um, we were lucky and got the help of, uh, some contractors in the area doing some things and they had some major equipment, major equipment. And, uh, I found out working with David and transportation, we have a tough area. We get snow here. It is tough to get around. It's tough to get rid of. And, um, he decided, I think that day there was going to be a plan. And the next thing I know, he and I were talking about snowplows. We were talking about all sorts of things so that, uh, we would never see the smile of Lori Dent in a parka, uh, expressing how she wanted to school the next day. But, you know, David takes those things and it's not just the initial reaction, but it's also long-term and thinking of how we can constantly add to that within the budget bank. In the bet budget he's allowed and, uh, those guys just do so much and sometimes with so little. So I really appreciate all that you've done to develop that group up there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm actually always impressed with how much gets done with such a small group. I've seen several of these from you and, uh, I've always appreciated them. When the written one actually is so full of information typically, that if you read the written one that you've done in the years past, it would probably take twice as long to get through. So, my favorite thing that we do as a district are the student interns. And I, I'm glad that that's working well. I hope it continues to work well, maybe even grows in other areas. But, um, for our students to see that, uh, going to school means something, one, and that actually can lead, uh, to a full-time career. And even if they don't, uh, go into grounds, maintenance or anything like that, they might learn that that's something they don't want to do and pursue a different career. Uh, I know I've had several jobs over the years that, uh, led me to believe that that's not the career for me. So I, I, I hope we continue to do that, work with our labor partners. And, uh, just to see how many student interns, uh, not just in your department with the technology. I know that there's more, more areas we can put them to use.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. All right. This brings us to, uh, two reports, uh, both by Marina, actually, busy lady. The first one is a change order report for Mountain View Middle School, which is to modify a building signage and make modifications to the contract as requested by the architect and our owner for a total of three thousand six hundred ninety six dollars. Uh, again, that's in your packet for review. The second report, um, will provide annual asset preservation program report, which is in your board, uh, board packet. Um, any board discussion this evening?
Let's go back to vaping.
Yeah, let's go back to.
I, I was really surprised when these students, uh, were just like, no. They have no idea what would happen to them or their friends. And in their, um, perception, nothing happened to anybody. And so it got me thinking that, you know, we have posters that we do for anti harassment or anti bullying things. Is, is that something that maybe work with ASB or encourage the ASB to come up with some posters next school year? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out. Uh, I know that the staff is always full of ideas on how to get the word out. I don't know. It was a different time. When I went to school, I knew exactly what would happen if you got caught with a tobacco product. Cause I got caught with one and, uh, you know, Saturday work was, I, I only had it once. And that was enough to say that these are not the kinds of folks I want to be around. So, uh, again, not that, not that we have Saturday work or anything like that, but we do have policies and students should know what would happen to them should they get caught. And they should be able to advise their friends. Hey, this is not a good idea. I don't think you ought to go down that, that path. And then also, I know we've talked about it in the past, but whether it's, I think we did a pilot program or something where they had a sensor in the bathroom. You know, maybe if we don't, if we, if we can't do that, maybe we should just start a rumor that, you know, if you're, if you're in the bathroom, you know, a purple something, you know, purple gas will come out and, and stain you so that they know that you were the one, uh, you know, vaping in the bathroom. I don't know. Anyone else have anything?
These are some of your best ideas so far. It's kind of like the pool. Don't pee in the pool. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Um, I know from, um, just in terms of messaging, I know as, um, my kids were, um, athletes. That was something that was really communicated very strongly. So maybe it's spreading the word out to more groups of kids. Cause we had, we listened to it every year about, um, kind of what would happen if you were caught with any kind of substance. And so that was kind of drilled in, but maybe, maybe spreading that a little bit more broadly would be something that, um, we could look into or explore.
Again, some of the students mentioned athletes and other leaders on ASB and things like that. And again, sometimes they don't know, have all the information or it might be a rumor. But their perception was that no, athletes have gotten caught vaping in the bathrooms, same with ASB people that got caught vaping in the bathroom or they're known to have, and nothing seems to happen. Again, that could be rumor conjecture, but, uh, if it does happen, something, there needs to be, you know, consequences. I don't know how severe, but I make sure we have a policy on it. I think we have a whole discipline chart of steps that, you know, go through. Definitely it's different than when I went to school. It starts a little more progressive and then gets a little more severe. Compared to when I went to school, it started as severe and got worse. So anyway.
Well, I would, I would say like, um, vaping obviously a big problem and we want, we don't want students to be doing that and I don't want anybody to be doing that. I'd be curious to actually get some more data on, um, on data on how much do the students know? Maybe it's something we can, when we do the survey for students, maybe we can think about adding some questions to, to like, do you know what the consequences are for these types of things and see if we can't maybe get some of that data to see like how much work we need to do on, on educating students. So I try to find the silver lining in a lot of things. So I'll find the silver lining. The fact that they didn't know means they are the kids who are not doing it. So I know that, uh, I know, yeah, yeah. So I know like, if you don't go to the principal's office, you probably don't pay attention to the punishments because you're not actually receiving them. But I'd be curious to get some data around what do our students, uh, what they are aware of and what they've done. Cause I think it's, I think here, I think at least from my daughter's experience at summer high school, she talks a lot about peer influence within the, in the school and how strong they hold themselves and their character. And I think that if we could get some data around that, it would help us decide what kind of messaging needs to go out. And I think the students can help us with that.
Perfect. Okay. Awesome. And maybe too, not to add more, but I'm curious, just, I know you've done a lot already around this and lots of conversations with building principals and things. So maybe just refresh us of what, what's already been done. What are the good things that you've already been, you're already doing in buildings to help with this problem? Cause I know it's, it's a bit of an ongoing thing. That's nothing new right now.
Yeah. I keep looking at executive director Sarah O'Donnell and Mary Lee's back there. She's like, we have the data. So we'll be sure to give you that data, but also to let you know what we are doing. And Kevin, you got a great point. You know, there are kids that can tell you your, uh, the discipline progression, uh, better than, you know, administrators can. And then there are kids that are like, what? I don't want to get in trouble. So there's a wide spectrum, but Sarah and I will talk and Mary Lee and I will get together. So.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Any other topics for discussion? None from Bill? Kevin, all right. Um, our next, uh, board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 12th. And we'll begin at six PM, uh, right here in the central office boardroom. At this time, in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act provision for executive sessions, the Southern Bonnie Lake School District Board of Directors will hold an executive session for the purposes of discussing potential litigation. Action is not anticipated following the executive session and we think the session will last approximately ten? Oh my gosh, ten minutes. Ten minutes. All right. Meetings adjourned. Thanks again for being.